The June 17, 2013 council meeting of the City Council of Issaquah, Washington, is called to order at 7:00 PM. And the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is an item this evening of special business, and that is the honoring of our 2013 Hall of Fame Award recipient. And I will ask Debbie Berto to please come forward. She is our Hall of Fame recipient. And... Each year, the city of Issaquah selects a person or persons to receive the Hall of Fame Award who over time has made a lasting contribution to our community. And our criteria include inspiration, service, leadership, civic-mindedness, activity in drawing positive attention to the community, fundraising efforts for the public good, and length of service to the community. And as I noted before, at our community awards ceremony, Debbie is Vice President of Issaquah Press Incorporated and publisher of the company's four newspapers, including the Issaquah Press, which was founded in 1900, and the company's other local publications, including Samamish Review, Snow Valley, Star, and the Newcastle News. And Debbie has been awarded with the State Newspaper Association's Highest Honor, the Master Editor and Publisher Award. She's also a past president of Washington Newspapers Publishers Association. She has been honored as Issaquah's Businessperson of the Year and Issaquah's Citizen of the Year. Twice in the last four years, she was named Kiwanian of the Year by our local club where she was past president. And she started back in 1982, a group called Issaquah Women Professionals, a group that originated when service clubs such as Kiwanis didn't allow women to be members. And her volunteerism continues today. She's on the Kiwanis Club's Environmental Chair of the Kiwanis Club's Environmental Committee and on the Board of Directors of Issaquah Community Services. She is a member of the Friends of Lake Samamish State Park and that committee, and has just done a number of things in the community. So it was a real delight to give her that award. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have here tonight other people who are members of the Hall of Fame. So I would like the past members of the Hall of Fame pleased to come forward, and people can see who you are and recognize you for your contributions to the community as well. So we have Barb D. Michelle, we have David Harris, Leon Koss, Skip Rowley, Robin Kelly, and Suzanne Suter. And these are but a few of the people who, over the course of 27 years, have been Hall of Fame recipients. And again, for all the reasons that were expounded about Debbie, people who have brought positive recognition to the community and done all sorts of great things in service to the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next this evening on the council's agenda is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on topics of interest or concern which are not scheduled for a public hearing at the council meeting. There is, in fact, a public hearing this evening, and the public hearing is on the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, for the years 2014 through 2019. So if you are here to speak to that topic, you will want to have signed up on the public hearing list. If there is another item of issue of concern or interest to you, then this would be the appropriate time to speak to that item. And I'll go through the guidelines for public participation. We ask that when you are recognized or your name is called, that you please come over and use the lectern and the microphone so that you may be seen and heard by those who are present in council chambers and also by those who are viewing the council meeting on Channel 21, our government access channel. We ask that you state your name and your address, and then if you want to emphasize a relationship to the city, for instance, you are a resident here, a community member, a property owner, a business owner, whatever you might feel is important for us to know, then please do so at that time. We ask that you limit comments to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written comments, please provide them to the city clerk. And with that, I will ask if anyone has signed up to speak during audience comments.
Yes, first on the list is Tiffany Andres, but I believe your intent was to talk in the public hearing?
Correct.
Hart Sugarman, did you wish to talk under audience comments?
Good evening, Mayor Frissinger and council members. My name is Hart Sugarman. Address is 2550 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. I'm a proud resident and homeowner for over 17 years. I come here this evening to speak about the speed limit along Newport Way Northwest between 17th Avenue and Lakemont Boulevard. Specifically, if driving westbound, this would be the approach to Oak Crest Drive through the Newport Way S-curves to Southeast 54th Street, the street that goes up to Cougar Mountain Zoo. I would like to refer to this map that shows the city of Issaquah. The official speed limit within the city limits is 25 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. The majority of streets are 25, 30, and 35 miles an hour as shown on this map in green. There's a handful of streets with a speed limit of 40 miles an hour as shown here in red. We have a small section of Highlands Drive, which is north of Interstate 90. We have the Issaquah Fall City Road. We have East Lake Samamish Parkway north of 56th, 17th Avenue Northwest, which is State Road 900, and the Subject Street Newport Way Northwest. It's interesting to note, all these streets that I mentioned are multi-lane streets except Newport Way. Characteristics of a multi-lane street is having four lanes or more. In fact, 17th Avenue, at one point near Gilman Boulevard, is 10 lanes wide. Newport Way from Sunset Way to Lakemont Boulevard is only a two-lane road and is having speed limits of 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, and 40 miles an hour. And it's that 40 mile an hour section of Newport Way that's a residential area with homes and condominiums along that way. Why is the speed limit so high? 40 miles an hour is fine if the road is straight, but not when there's characteristics of the specific portion of road having curves and limited sight lines. For comparison, if we look at the street that runs parallel on the north of Interstate 90, the street is called Northwest Samamish Road. The speed limit along that road is 30 miles an hour and 35 miles an hour as it heads west. So as I compare these two parallel roads with the increased volume of vehicles and the number of adjacent residences, I wonder why the speed is so high on the southern two-lane road and it's set at 40 miles an hour. And now we have a new hiking trail on Newport Way, just east of Oak Crest Drive. It's called Cougar Mountain Regional Wildland Park, the Big Tree Ridge Trail. Hikers for this trail are parking their vehicles along the southern shoulder of the road. Please see this recent photo. There are 18 vehicles parked in this photo. At times, some drivers are parking their vehicles facing the west in the eastbound shoulder. That means the westbound drivers are crossing the yellow double solid line to reach the southern shoulder of the road. In the past, I have come to this council and have also sent emails regarding the safety of pedestrians and cyclists along Newport Way. With the current speed limit of 40 miles an hour, the drivers are not able to negotiate the curves of the street, see the pedestrians in the crosswalk even with the enhanced small flashing lights, and react in time to stop. Recently, on a clear sunny day, I attempted to cross at the crosswalk at Pine Cone Drive. I activated the flashing lights. I stood at the road's edge, and four vehicles drove straight through. Not one of them even slowed down to stop for me. They're just not paying attention. In fact, some people who wish to cross the street are actually waiting now for a break in traffic rather than risk walking out where drivers are stopping in one direction but perhaps not stopping in the other direction. Something needs to be done to reduce the speed limit within this residential zone to a reasonable speed. I hereby submit to you today a citizen's action request, signed by myself...
One minute remaining.
...endorsed and supported by the Summer Hill Homeowners Association as well as residents on Pine Cone Drive. I'm available to meet with and discuss this subject with city engineers. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good evening.
Thank you.
All this is for you.
Do we have other people who are signed up to speak?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Hi, my name is Scott Hamilton. I live at 19727 Southeast 19th Street in Samamish. I am a customer of the Samamish Water and Sewer District. At your last meeting, Mayor Frissinger had made several statements, some of which I had commented on at that meeting, but I ran out of my five-minute time. And so there are a couple more statements that she made two weeks ago that I wanted to address tonight. At the last, excuse me, at the last meeting, the mayor made reference to something like 430, whatever the number is, injection wells in King County, including one at the elementary school in Samamish. It is true that there are over 400 injection wells in King County, but the injection well that has been the subject of so much comment here in Issaquah is the only one that has really adjacent aquifer. These other injection wells are not adjacent aquifer, and that's what makes this permit application of Issaquah so unique. And that really is lost in a lot of the conversation. That's something that's not really discussed. And it is true that there is an injection well at an elementary school in Samamish, but what was not said to the city council by the mayor is that injection well blew out and sent rock, mud, and other debris into Ebray Creek, which threatened the Kocany Salmon downstream. Injection wells just aren't 100% reliable technology. They just simply aren't. Two weeks ago, the mayor criticized the water district for spending $50,000 on a PR campaign to inform their customers of what's going on. Yet, of course, the city of Issaquah is prepared to spend $1.5 million, as detailed in Mr. Irvin's own white paper, and the city has not really been forthcoming in telling your taxpayers that you're prepared to spend this kind of money. And I think there'd be a lot of people who might suggest there are better uses of money, particularly when you have some of your own social services asking the city for money and your own budget constraints seem to get in the way with that, but you're willing to spend a million and a half. Two weeks ago, the mayor had alleged that the sewer district or the water district has a political agenda in opposing this permit. You know, that's real easy to go out and make allegations like political agendas. You know, Issaquah did not tell the public of the water permit application. The water district had to do that. Issaquah did not tell Samamish of the water permit application. A citizen had to tell the city of Samamish about that. Issaquah did not tell Klahani about Issaquah's plans to eventually try to provide water service to Klahani. The water district had to do that. Why are you even doing an annexation right now at this particular time? You haven't had the water district in for presentation like you've had from Mr. Irvin and Mr. Evan. You know, the entire process really smacks of the proverbial backroom, smoke-filled process of secret decision-making. You know, what's your political agenda? You see how easy that is, mayor, to make that allegation? You know, you talk about an open and transparent process, but this has been anything but open and transparent. The efforts by Issaquah affect 93% of the water district that lie outside the Issaquah city limits. If you wanted to have an open and transparent process, I really think, as I've said each time I've been up here before you, that you really need to put politics aside. You need to schedule an open and transparent meeting that includes the water district, the public at large, and also now the city of Samamish. I understand they've taken an interest in this. And let's get everybody in one room, all the experts from both sides in one room, and talk through all this so that the public has a clear understanding, so that you have a clear understanding. I know there are things that you're not being told by your staff. You know, if you really truly believe you're in the right here with this ecology permit, there should be no reason why you would not be willing to put this up to public scrutiny and public debate and...
30 seconds.
Thank you. And so I would just again, once again, urge you to call a meeting of all interested parties so that you can have a dialogue, not this monologue that continues to go back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who have signed up to speak during audience comments?
There are none.
Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments who hasn't had an opportunity? Yes, ma'am, and then gentleman over here in the green shirt.
I've not signed up. I'd love to just make a quick comment.
Certainly.
My name is Lisa Bus, and I live in the South Cove area. My address is 4334-189th Avenue Southeast. And as I come into Issaquah, there is an intersection, we call it, it's where Tollies and the soccer field is. We call it the intersection of death because in both directions on 900, people run the red lights. It happens on a daily basis, and the pedestrian lane is not lit. As in Kirkland, when they had a fatality, they put the blinking lights in so that cars could see it. There is nothing there. It's a very, very dangerous intersection. About a year ago, my husband was driving, and the car in front of him hit a pedestrian. Pedestrian went in the middle of the road. We see it and we're part of it all the time because that's our main route into Issaquah. And just somebody's got to be aware, maybe put cameras in that intersection. It'd be a great way to make some money for the city instead of over here at the school. Maybe address that area because it happens every single time the light changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Gert. My wife and I have been residents of Issaquah for about 20 years. I live at 4629 191st Avenue Southeast, also in the South Cove area. And I didn't get all your comments earlier, so I hope I'm not talking about a discussion that is on another agenda. So I want to specifically address two items. The trail or the walkway along Lake Samamish from the South Cove area ended downtown Issaquah. And as a minor point, just as a separate item, is the naming of that stupid highway. Right now, the road segment starts off at the traffic circle on West Lake Samamish where Lakemont comes in, and then down, it goes for about a little mile and a half, and then it changes somewhere, actually, there's two different signs that are four blocks apart that says it changes to Northwest Samamish Road. And then if you want to stay on Northwest Samamish Road, you have to turn left at the signal the young lady was just talking about. And then you go down, and if you look at Google MapQuest and the county parcel maps, all of them disagree where the road changes to 56th. I would like to propose that that whole segment from the circle to East Lake Samamish Parkway be renamed South Lake Samamish Parkway or just Samamish Road. It really doesn't make sense. To tell people, get off at Lake Samamish, turn right onto Lake Samamish at the traffic circle. I get people confused. I really want to address the segment that goes from South Cove, actually from the traffic circle all the way to the state park. I feel really bad about the 45 mile an hour speed limit. However, we have a 35 mile per hour speed limit, and we have no pedestrian walkway. Newport Way has pedestrian walkways, has a very wide bicycle lane as well. Riding a bike or being a pedestrian along that segment of the highway is extremely dangerous. I walk that route regularly. In fact, I typically, I love you have a map here. I live right here. I walk down across the new multimillion dollar bridge that Hertie Anybody Ever uses, up Newport Way, back to the traffic circle, and home again. It's a six-mile loop. The only part that I feel unsafe is that segment on West Lake Samamish Parkway. If you go out there, drive there tomorrow, you will see everybody's trash cans are out on the street, blocking even the little bit of walkway that exists. About five years ago, my wife and I started hiking the John Wayne Trail, Iron Horse Trail. We ended up hiking all the way from Hayek through the tunnel to downtown Seattle. One of the worst segments is that segment. The other bad segment was the one from Preston to Issaquah. That one's been rebuilt, which is great. Last winter, we decided to walk to the theater from our home. We did not realize that the theater got out after it was dark. There is no lighting on that road. You can't walk against the traffic because that side is right next to the freeway, and so therefore you have to walk with the traffic. We ended up stopping at Big Five Sporting Goods, buying reflective vests, buying flashlights, and still had to stop and turn around to make certain it was safe walking that road. People ignore the speed limit. There's a radar sign there telling people how fast they're going. They zoom right through it. They don't pay any attention. Two years ago, I was driving into city, and as I approached West Lake Samamish, the entrance to the park, some large suburban came up behind me very, very fast, blinked its lights on. I checked. I was doing the speed limit. I got past the median there right by the entrance to the park, and the woman passed me in the left turn lane and then turned into the soccer field. She had to get by me that fast. I confronted her. I won't...
45 seconds.
I won't use the words that she used. Anyway, I really think that if you were to actually do some monitoring of northwest of Sunset Boulevard, compare it to the amount of traffic, both foot and bicycle, that's on Lake Samamish Parkway. There's a lot more people on it. And hope that somebody can do something about improving that. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that people wish to, that people's emotions are strong on this topic. We generally ask people not to applaud or do other demonstrations, but given that you've applauded, I... That's one time. Please, please, please don't in the future, although I certainly understand concerns and topics that you are going to be bringing up during the Transportation Improvement Program discussion. So, thank you. Are there any other people who didn't have an opportunity to speak during audience comments to a topic other than the Transportation Improvement Program who'd like to speak at this time? Anyone else hearing and seeing non-audience comments are closed. And the next item on the council's agenda for the evening are committee and regional reports. And I will ask Councilmember Fortner if he has anything to report.
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee met last week on Thursday. We had Agenda Bill 6655, a franchise agreement with McLeod USA Telecommunication Services. Staff reviewed the franchise, and it's on the consent agenda tonight for approval. We also had a presentation on the 2014 to 2019 TIP. Staff reviewed that this infrastructure committee offered a reprioritization. There's a public hearing on that this evening. There was also a discussion about the Northwest Samamish Road safety and lack of sidewalks, which I'm sure we hear more about this evening. We also had a presentation from staff on the Water System Plan Update. It's getting ready to be submitted back to Department of Health, and it will come back to the Infrastructure Committee when that's been reviewed by Department of Health again. The next meeting is scheduled for July 11 at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Land and Shore Committee met last week, June 11, and we had four items on our agenda. The first was Agenda Bill 6656, amendments to the local construction administration code and adoption of the current Washington State Building Code. This is largely the adoption of the 2012 International Building Code, which was adopted by the state and therefore followed by the city of Issaquah. But we adopt that code. We have a few minor amendments. They're mostly administrative, and the committee recommended that this be put on the consent agenda for July 1. We also had for discussion only the Landscape Conservation and Local Infrastructure Program, which we affectionately call LCLIP. It's a fairly complicated program. Like I said, it was discussion only, and we had a good discussion about the program with representatives from King County, Forterra, and Burke. Very briefly, this is a state program that creates financial incentives for cities to make infrastructure investments that support growth while simultaneously conserving farm and forest land across the region. It combines some tax increment financing and transfer of development rights tools. The committee discussed this and thought it would be a good idea if we had some information in the future about at what points in time or development we might more seriously consider this program. And there was an agenda bill. It was just discussion. We've talked about it before, and it'll be back before us probably in a couple of months with some strategies brought forward by the same representatives. We also had on our agenda Agenda Bill 6667. This is transfer of development rights. And we got our final look at the draft revised code and made some final tweaks to it, and the committee recommended that the agenda bill come to the full council, I believe, at our July 1 meeting. And then we also had a discussion regarding the fiscal analysis of the proposed Klahani annexation area. And that was just sort of a follow-up to all of the discussions that we've had over the past several months, in case we had any other questions. And I believe there may be an agenda bill coming forward from the administration first part of July. We did have a guest committee member, and that was Councilmember Scher. Thank you for filling in for Councilmember Marks while he's been gone. We had some very good suggestions from Councilmember Scher. The next Land and Shore meeting is July 9, and the agenda is not set yet. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. I do not have a committee assignment to report on. However, I can report on the East Side Transportation Partnership Meeting, which occurred last Friday. We had a discussion regarding, essentially it's called tolling implementation, and whether system-wide tolling would be something that the state would be looking at. And by system-wide, I mean not just 520, not just I-90, but a lot of other highways around the region. There is a study that's going to be undertaken, and the Sound Cities Association weighed in on that through a letter calling out certain important points. There was some discussion amongst ETP membership about what stance the partnership should take on... take on the issue of tolling. The partnership is attempting to take a stronger stand on eastside transportation issues, a more active role on those types of issues. Both myself and Councilmember Asher from the City of Kirkland raised the point that we should take a look at regional financing options before we simply decide on tolling as being the funding mechanism. Ultimately, the partnership agreed to support the SCA letter with an emphasis on looking at regional funding opportunities. And currently, ETP leadership is wordsmithing a letter to match the decision of the body. We also had an update on the 2013 legislative session, which, as many of us know, appears to be headed into double overtime in Olympia. And the transportation funding package is still caught up in a lot of discussions among representatives in both the House and the Senate. We also had a presentation from David Beal with Sound Transit, talking about ST3, which is future planning that Sound Transit has for expansions beyond the existing connections on the west side, as well as East Link, which is part of Sound Transit 2. And the hope is with Sound Transit 3, that someday in the near future, we can be looking at a potential measure to move additional expansions forward. And I do know that Issaquah is certainly targeted in the sights of eventual planning for Sound Transit expansion, as we are perfectly situated along the I-90 corridor. We also had a brief discussion on our draft ETP inter-local agreement. And that is going to be coming back to the partnership for discussion next month. And assuming its approval, it will probably wind its way to this city and all the other member jurisdictions within the next month or two. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services and Safety Committee met this evening just prior to this meeting. There was only one item that came before us this evening. And that was discussion in regards to the creation of a nonprofit status for eastside fire and rescue. This would relieve Fire District 10 from being our employer of record. After a little bit of discussion, it was recommended to move forward to the full council on July 1st. And so that will be coming forward on the consent agenda. Our next meeting is July 4th, which we failed to talk about this evening at committee meeting. So we do need to find another meeting, unless you guys really have nothing to do on the evening of July 4th. So that time period, meeting time is not set yet. So that will be up on the committee, the city's website, when we decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Last Wednesday, I attended the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee. Most of the items on the agenda were informational, including about solid waste, the King County Metro Strategic Plan, and the 2014 Work Program Budget for the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee. So there was no action on those items, but I did want to share with everybody that the Public Issues Committee, or PIC, and part of SCA, who Councilmember Scher mentioned, Sound Cities' earlier involvement in that transportation options, funding transportation options, that committee passed an emergency resolution urging the passage of the transportation package that has passed through the House Transportation Committee in Olympia, urging that that transportation package be passed. So there, it was just a couple of days after, I think, an alternative transportation package was proposed by the committee from the Senate. And so the SCA actually passed this resolution to urge their adoption of the House version of the transportation package, which has many elements that are consistent with our city's legislative agenda and projects that are very important to us, including funding for public transportation and other specific road projects. So that's, that's all I have to report from the SCA meeting from last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next committee of the whole council meeting is scheduled for June 25th at 6:30 here in council chambers. Two items on the agenda at this time, the annual sustainability report and an update on the economic, the work that the Economic Vitality Commission is doing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There will not be an executive session meeting this evening. And I wish to draw council's attention, Councilmember Tolomarts is excused. And I also want to draw the council's attention to the fact that Bo Park is here this evening with us, from Ogden Murphy Wallace. So he is our city attorney this evening. Welcome and thanks. Several items under the mayor's report. The Issaquah Police Department is a founding member of a new regional law enforcement team that will investigate officer-involved shootings. And this group is called the King County Investigative Response Team. It will ensure that a thorough, objective, and transparent investigations are conducted in a timely and professional manner. And by pooling resources, the team maximizes the skill of the most experienced investigators and supervisors in our region, while also using the latest technology and techniques. And the team is available to any King County law enforcement agency that requests its services. Another item, Issaquah will be making music this Friday, June 21st, 2013, to celebrate National Music Day. National Music Day is a day when people around the world celebrate the importance of music in their lives through free, open, and accessible events. And this event is being celebrated in more than 450 cities and 100 countries. Issaquah is one of those 450 cities. So people are invited to join the celebration in historic Old Town Issaquah and in Gilman Village from 4:00 to 9:00 PM this Friday evening. The next item, the Washington State Department of Ecology sent an email last week to a group of Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District customers. And that email addressed many of the concerns about water quality. It reiterated that stormwater infiltration is an important tool for ensuring that our groundwater supplies continue to provide enough water for everyone. And for additional information, including a copy of the email, please go to issaquahwa.gov/rwater. There are a number of items addressed in that particular email. And they address the topic of pretreatment and what actions the city takes at present to pretreat the stormwater. It also identifies filtration of soil filtration levels. It talks about previous discussions between the Water and Sewer District, Issaquah and Ecology, over district concerns and the monitoring that took place in response to those. It additionally talks about bacteria levels and the amounts of bacteria that have been monitored, where they were monitored, and the fact that the levels dropped by 99% or more in 30 feet of travel through the soil. Points out the closest Water and Sewer District well is over 500 feet from the infiltration pipe. So there's an abundance of information there. And again, it's at issaquahwa.gov/rwater. That concludes the mayor's report. And I will ask the council if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed.
They have.
Then I will ask the council's pleasure on the adoption of the consent calendar. Councilmember Butler.
I would move approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Consent calendar is adopted. The next item, following the adoption of the consent calendar, is the public hearing on Agenda Bill 6623, better known as the 2014 through 2019 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. And this meeting was scheduled previously to include a public hearing. We will hear a staff presentation. Council will have some opportunity for questions following the staff presentation. And then I will open the public hearing up for people to provide input and comments. So.
Very good, Madam Mayor, Gary, and councilmembers of the council. Gary Costa, Transportation Manager, pleased to be here to present the 2014-2019 Transportation Improvement Program. The first thing I want to bring your attention, though, is a minor error in the Agenda Bill. On the second page, first line of the Agenda Bill, refer to non-motorized modes of transportation and refer to 7%. And that's incorrect. That should have been 17%. But it is correctly shown in Exhibit C, or Attachment C, or Exhibit C, excuse me, the memo from PPC was it correctly identified as 17%. Apologize for that error. So as required by state law, the each agency is required to bring forward their TIP in order to receive state and federal funds and able to use the state half-cent gas tax Federal state and federal funds and state funds are available for construction projects under the Moving Ahead for Progress, the 21st Century Act. That stands for MAP 21 that Congress approved back in July 6th of 2012. And also for using the Transportation Improvement Board funds, TIP funds. Providing an opportunity to the public to comment on the TIP, we've taken the TIP to the Planning Policy Commission on April 25th, to the Chamber Government Affairs Committee on May 2nd, and then on May 13th, we brought it for the review of the Council Infrastructure Committee. At the CIC meeting last Thursday evening, the CIC wanted to recommend change to the administration's recommendation. I will cover the CIC's recommendation at the end of my presentation. Following tonight's public hearing and after approval of the public hearing, we will submit the TIP to PSRC and to Wash Dot. This is the spreadsheet showing the first 19 projects as submitted by the administration. Although the TIP is not required to be prioritized, the main reason, again, is to have these projects in the TIP to be able to use the federal and state funding. This is showing the rest of their projects up through 35. We've added also some new projects, 22 through 35 are new projects that came out of the Central Issaquah Plan. And these projects are actually shown out in future years because the Central Issaquah Plan is more related to a 20-year plan. So at this time, we show them out in future years. So typically, we like to break the projects up so you can see what categories the projects are in. So this sheet shows traffic analysis, traffic programs, the roadway investment projects, or the, basically the various projects up through 24. And on this page is the rest of the road investment projects, roadway maintenance overlays, and the non-motorized alternative transportation projects, and then the bridge improvement, which is the Dogwood Street Bridge Project. We also like to see what categories, as far as multimodal project, are compared to. So here we are showing the projects that fit into roadway capacity improvements, the transit and transit supportive improvements, sidewalks, and non-motorized improvements for the various projects. And this leads us to the map. That's the northerly portion of the city, shown here, with all of the projects listed. And then this is the southerly portion of the list of the projects of the city. And this screen is where we show the changes that have came about or that are being recommended by the CIC on June 13th. In blue, those products really have not changed any of the years that the projects are being proposed in, but the yellows, four projects in the yellow, have a reflection in the years that are being changed because of the priority. And this is showing the, the yellow are the projects that have changed in priority. The number nine, which is the 12th Avenue SR 900 Northwest Sammamish Road Improvement, that is moved up. So that actually was brought up into 2016 to start. The Northwest Gilman Boulevard Safety Improvement Project was actually moved out one year. And same with Issaquah Pine Lake Road Project was moved out one year. And on 14, the 11th Avenue 12th Overcrossing Direct Access Project was moved up one year. And this is the rest of the projects in blue that were discussed and recommended for recommendation to be changed. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the city council at this point? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Gary, I appreciate you, you mentioned projects 22 through 35 were added as a result of the Central Issaquah Plan. I didn't cross-check. Is that a comprehensive list of projects as identified in the EIS of the CIP?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
Okay, thank you. So there's, I mean, so really, I mean, so all the, the projects, their impact, should they actually be realized, you know, their impacts to traffic and service level, and the whole vision of mobility and transportation, that all those ones that are mentioned in the CIP are now, you know, on this TIP? We're going to start tracking them?
From the Central Issaquah Plan, the projects that were identified by the Burke Study are the ones that were included in here. My understanding is that they're all the projects in.
Okay. And specifically, I think the CIP, I mean, excuse me, the EIS part of that, considered specific projects, I do believe, as well, so.
I think so, but I'm not positive.
Well, if, if there's anything different than that, if you could just let us know, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman and then Councilmember Butler.
So Gary, can you repeat that again? Which projects were added as a result of the Central Issaquah Plan? Which numbers?
On this list, you can see them from 22 through 30, 20, actually 23, sorry.
It must.
25, sorry, 25 through 35, actually. The Front Street Interchange was identified in the.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Because Black Nugget Wall wouldn't be in that.
No, that was.
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a project, and I'm looking at the TIP priority number 11. There's a project listed there, 12th Avenue slash SR 900 slash Northwest Sammamish Road Improvements that a citizen spoke to briefly during audience comments. Is that project included in the local improvement district that we are considering?
Yes.
Okay.
That intersection.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Yes. Councilmember Winterstein.
Yes, and give me, I'm going to find myself my place in the document first. So, okay, I found it. So the, the first item is on your list is traffic calming in the TIP. The next one is, okay, these are the overlays. And then the one after the overlays, you know, the complete streets. Could you tell me, tell us a little bit about what the numbers mean there? Because the, for example, the overlays, which is priority number two, we're estimating in 2013 to spend about $475,000. And then in 2014, up to $782, and then it goes up from there. So that's quite a big bump in the list of potential projects. And then the, then the, the complete streets does something similar. It estimates in 2013 to be 363, and then starting in 2014, it goes to $620,000. Is there some, you know, big wave of something coming? Is there something status of the road? Does it tell us anything about an essential backlog we must address, say, for street overlays? Or just, what does that, what do those big jumps tell us?
I can answer that. That's simply the. That's simply the, um, the years before we were, the, the requests, if you look back at the previous, um, 2013 TIP, uh, the request was around the, the five-hundred, six-hundred-thousand range. Uh, so we just increased those three percent per year with the requests. So we didn't go back and reduce it based on what was budgeted, but the request that actually went forward last year in the CIP was around, I don't remember the actual number, um, but I think it was around the five-hundred to six-hundred-thousand range. So we've been just steadily increasing it three percent per year in the, in the requests. So we didn't bring it back down again.
To match the 2013 actual?
Yes, right.
So it's not suggestive of some growing backlog or, or...
No.
It's... Okay, it's just your typical, your normal kind of forecasting?
Right, typically.
Model, okay? Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Scher.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I can follow up also on Councilmember Winterstein's question. The, the reduced amounts for the 2013 budget and estimate also reflect a council policy decision at budget time to reduce, uh, those particular funds. And so in years past, uh, the recommendation at budget time has been in the amounts that you would see from 2014 and beyond, albeit a few percentage points lower, as Gary pointed out. But the last couple of years, uh, for various reasons, those funds have been cut, uh, in our annual budget, uh, cycle, and so therefore it's produced the, what you would see as lower, uh, amounts for 2013, but it doesn't reflect that there are more projects coming our way in the next six years for those funds. It's just, we decided to cut those funds, if that makes sense. I did have one, one question for Gary. Do you have the, uh, project sheets, uh, part of the overhead as well? The, I know that there are quite a few folks here this evening who, uh, are likely going to ask about Project Eighteen, which is Northwest Sammamish Road, and I was just wondering if you could, um, put that project, uh, up there so that the members of the audience, uh, could see what, uh, that project entails. Um, so if there are any questions about, uh, particular aspects of it, uh, then maybe that would be a little bit more clear, uh, about that particular project. It's not gonna look like that, I, I take it.
Most likely.
I, yeah. That's pretty, that's pretty good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council at this point? It is six minutes of eight, and I will first start by describing the guidelines for public participation in the, uh, public hearing process, and then I will open this public hearing. The guidelines are very much akin to the ones that were read previously for audience comments. We ask that when you are recognized, you please come over and use the lectern and the microphone so that you may be seen and heard by everyone who's here in council chambers, and also by those people who are viewing the council meeting on our government access channel, Channel 21. We ask you to please state your name and your address, and if you want to emphasize a particular relationship to the city, for instance, the area in which you live, that you're a resident, a property owner, a business owner, whatever you feel is important for us to know, please feel free to do so at that time. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written remarks, we ask that you please submit them for the city clerk. And with that, it is now five of eight, and the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program for the years 2014 through 2019 is called to order. So, and is opened.
Thank you.
My name is Tiffany Endries. Um, I am here representing at least three-hundred-and-forty-eight members of our neighborhood. Um, I am a resident since 1980. I'm a former Issaquah School District teacher. I'm now a teacher over at BCC. Um, I'm pretty committed to being in this community. Um, okay, here we go. I thank you, by the way, um, Councilmembers Forkner and Scher and Gary for last week letting me allow, allowing me to crash your meeting and do a dry run of my presentation. What we're asking for is that this project be moved up to top priority, basically. We need safe pedestrian access in our neighborhood. Other than the, I think it's the Sycamore Development out on Issaquah Hobart Road, we, and as other neighborhoods on Issaquah Hobart Road, we are the only neighborhood with no safe pedestrian access into the city, and I can go into greater detail later. This is one-hundred percent a safety issue. There are pedestrians and bicyclists of all ages, from small children to elderly, very elderly out on this road all the time. The road is used for both leisure activities and commuting. This road now has a much larger amount of traffic than it used to. Um, it increases as people use it to bypass I-90 traffic during rush hour. When traffic is bad on I-90, many commuters hop over to the parkway up to exit thirteen, which means a huge increase of non-local, very speedy traffic. There is not a huge police presence on this road to deter speeding or crossing the double yellow line to pass drivers who are going the speed limit. This gentleman referred to it. I, two weeks ago, at nine-thirty at night, was coming home from work, going probably about thirty-five to forty, coming back from sunset from the interchange, in a red Corvette. Passed me double-yellow line by Timberlake Park, and then continued to tailgate and pass other cars. I actually followed him home. He lives a block from me. Um, [laughing] no one here, not anyone here. Sorry, okay. Um, even if the police were here twenty-four-seven, they cannot stop a distracted driver who crosses the white line. Going to the infrastructure committee meeting the other night, the, what, mile and a half, I counted three cars that went over the line. Um, coming here tonight, I counted two cars going over the white line. Drivers notice a sidewalk or a curb. It is a physical barrier that will do damage to your car. Um, they're less likely to get near it rather than just a white line, which is a guideline. It's often crossed. The sidewalk, yeah, the sidewalk and curb are physical barriers. The white line is just a line. On dark and rainy evenings, and we have a lot of those here, um, and early mornings, because the parkway is a frontage road, is what I've been told, there's no lighting on it. And driving this road since nineteen eighty-seven, 'cause I've lived in South Cove since nineteen eighty-seven, it's hard to see. And as a driver, you're dealing with the lights from the freeway coming at you, and so you focus on the white line. As your eyes go, that is where your car goes, that is where your bicycle goes, that's just human nature. People focus on the white line to be able to see as they're driving at night. Um, this is fine, except when there are pedestrians or bicyclists on the road, and again, when it's dark and rainy, even if they have all the safety things, they have the flashlights, they have everything, they're still not seen. Um, it's very, very common during periods of heavy rain for the shoulder, and in cases of the main roadway itself, to be unusable due to excessive standing water. The condition of limited and/or plugged drainage exceeds the practical capability of the public works responders to keep the roadway clear of standing water and to be safe. Certainly, there can be no assumption that pedestrian and bicycle use can be safely accommodated during periods of heavy rain. And hello, this is Seattle.
One minute.
Oh, crud, sorry. We've been asking for sidewalks on the parkway for at least twenty-five years. We can document it back to, back to the nineties. Um, we have been selling, Issaquah sells, it sells itself as a green society, as a green city. It's all over the webpage. I have quotes in the handout that I gave you. That doesn't work for us. Here we go. When we were annexed, it was one of our top three items that was requested, and we were led to believe that the city would take care of it for us. It's never been taken care of. Um, we have been told, the studies have been done, that do not show the need for safer pedestrian access than what is already there. Which study showed the need for the paving of the Issaquah, or the East Lake Sammamish Trail? Which study showed the need for the turf soccer fields? Which study showed the need for all the beautiful, um, improvements all over the roads? The pedestrian access on West Lake Sammamish is not a request to make the area aesthetically pleasing, but to make it safe. We were annexed, that's time. Okay, sorry, thank you. This is the last thing. This is the actual petition as of whatever time this afternoon, and then I have other handouts. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have other people who have signed up to speak?
Uh, there are none.
There are none. Are there people present this evening who wish to speak during the public hearing who have not had an opportunity to sign up or who have not yet signed up? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'd like to.
Certainly.
I have to leave the park, so...
Oh, cer- certainly.
Uh, my name is Jan Kupcinski. Um, we have lived in what we consider Issaquah since nineteen eighty-two. We are the only waterfront that the city of Issaquah has, uh, down in South Cove. We live in Greenwood Point. Although we weren't annexed until 2006, we always considered our, Issaquah our home. We shop here, we pay our taxes here now. One of the biggest things that frustrates me is not only the safety, I've talked to Peter and Greg and all kinds of people over the years, but, um, it was something that was promised us when we explored being annexed, and, uh, that was that the access from perhaps Sunset Elementary to the State Park would be improved. Uh, it's used constantly. If you travel any other part up into Bellevue or the rest of the part of the parkway that, that Issaquah is, owns, it's much better than it is in this short stretch. It's a blight. You see it from the city, from the I-90, you know, we got cars, dealerships on this side, on this other side, we've got big drainage, you've leftover drainage cement things that are stored in front of Sammamish Beach Club, and just a pell-mell access along the edges. Uh, it's used all the time. We had marathons, we've had bike-a-thons. People have, are using it tonight. When I was driving here, I probably went by twenty people using that stretch, again, that I consider very unsafe. I guess maybe we're hoping for an accident, and then maybe a liability case against the city that would move you, I'm not sure. But I do feel that, that the city promised this, and they've reneged, and, and we, in good faith, we signed up, said no, 'cause Issaquah's our home. It was our mailing address, it's where we shop, we send our kids to school, and since eighty-two, nothing's happened out there especially. And in two thousand, prior to 2006, it was promised something would happen, and it's not. So, um, when I saw it there, it's very hard to read this font, and I'm not faulting you. I've taught high school for many, many years, so I understand that, but, uh, it'd be great to have a copy of this, or know if I can get a copy of that, just so I know what's entailed. And I'd also like to say that I saw Sammamish, uh, west, east side, well, the east side's looking pretty darn good right now. I think this last steg, uh, section of the, um, Sammamish Parkway that belongs to Issaquah greatly needs your help and improvement, um, just to make it safe. If nothing else, little tiny curbs or something, it just needs, maybe cut off all traffic one-way, and it's only a one-way bike path. Surely, there's gotta be some kind of compromise here where we can make it safer for the kids to access the State Park and that beautiful overpass that you put over ninety. We can't get there from here. So, um, thank you for listening, and I'd like promises given, that were given, fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, yes, sir, and then the lady over here.
My daughters are actually very passionate about this as well. My name's Jeremy Jensen. I live in the South Cove neighborhood. I'm actually in that house you can see from the freeway that has a big metal rooster in front of it, in the Lego house, that's the, kind of a landmark right there. And we've lived in the city for seven years, and I'm a business owner. We provide the medical equipment and respiratory equipment for a lot of the nursing homes in the area. I just add my voice to what's been said. It's, we, uh, we run down and swim in the lake probably three, four times a, a week during the summer, and I take all three of my girls with me, and they're on their bikes, and we get honked at every time. And people look at us like we're nuts, and maybe our risk tolerance is probably a little bit higher than others, but it's pretty dodgy. It really is. It's, uh, I mean, at some point, the, the, the space on the other side of the line is, is no more than a couple of feet. And, um, but we love the lake, you know? It's, it's, it's what we wanna do in the summer, it's why we live in the area. So I just wanted to add that. I, I appreciate your consideration on this. There's, I've talked to a number of people in the neighborhood that are pretty passionate about it as well, but, you know, we, uh, we wanted to come and just make our voices heard and, and get a chance to see the City Council in action, so it's been a good, good experience for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Josie Beck, and I live in the same neighbor, in Greenwood Point, in the same area, and my address is 18724 Southeast Forty-Fifth Place. And I just wanna thank the city for addressing this. I do think it's urgent to move it up in the list because it is not safe. There's no room for error. Like, I'll be in my car, and on one side of me, there's a walker with a dog, on the other side of me, there's a truck, and on the other side of that person, there's a cyclist. So, I mean, you know, three-hundred people signed a petition about a sidewalk. I support the sidewalk, but I also do think that there needs to be consideration, and it says bicycle safety, so we need to make sure we have bicycle safety as well. So, um, you know, I support a sidewalk being put in. I definitely support a good bike lane being put in next to the sidewalk, and if for some reason, something like that can't happen. Everyone uses this trail for biking, walking, or, well, they don't use this trail, they use the shoulder next to a car for biking, walking, running, everything. So, you know, a multi-purpose trail would be great in this area, and I would just, I biked the one at East Lake Sammamish this morning, it's wonderful, and everyone's safe there. And so, um, I would just like to thank you for addressing the issue and say I do support a sidewalk and a great bike lane and, or a multi-purpose trail, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Melody Shirding. Um, I live at 5022 West Lake Sammamish Parkway Southeast. I'm right next to the rooster. Jeremy. Um, I'm also, um, I am one of the organizers of one of our fastest-growing charities here in, um, Issaquah, which is called Cycle the Wave. We're expecting fourteen-hundred women to come and cycle this year and bring them all to Issaquah. Um, I was also a member of the salsa group, South Lake Sammamish Association, that was instrumental in, um, getting annexation to happen in South Cove, South Lake Sammamish area. Also lived there since nineteen eighty-eight, so that's me. Um, I wanted just to thank everyone. So many of the council members have been instrumental in listening, and I know, um, councilperson, um, member, uh, Winterstein, has invited me as a stakeholder to, um, a transportation, a cycling, um, transit center kind of meeting that was very helpful. Um, I just wanted to echo what I've heard here tonight, that stretch of roadway is extraordinarily dangerous. Uh, we've had our ladies ride down that, uh, the first two years of a ride. It's very nerve-wracking up here. [laughing] I'm not used to public speaking. Oh, golly, oh, anyway, get me on a cycle. Um, but, uh, there are many places in Issaquah that I know that we wanna be bike-friendly. I certainly want Issaquah to be bike-friendly. Um, they're not really, there's places that aren't, and I, as a pedestrian or a cyclist, oftentimes, uh, use the sidewalks or whatever I can, uh, to get past some of the dangerous areas. Um, West Lake Sammamish Parkway being probably the most dangerous that I've been on. Somebody, or Jeremy, I think, said that there was a place that's only two feet wide. Well, we've measured it, 'cause it's not our first time at the rodeo here, um, with the Transportation Committee. Uh, it goes down to eighteen inches is all that the shoulder is for pedestrians or cyclists if you happen to get pushed off the road, which sometimes you get squeezed. Um, the drivers in Issaquah, not always so friendly, as been mentioned. Um, the city could do a lot to help us with that, uh, through enforcement, more signage, um, just a public service campaign to be kinder to cyclists. But, anyway, I wanted to thank you for all that you have done and will do, and I certainly hope to move that up the list as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, who would wish to speak during the public hearing? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. My name is Lee Mancini, and my husband is Daniel Greenwood, who, excuse me, I'm nervous as well. I haven't publicly spoken in a long time. My husband is Daniel Greenwood, in which is the namesake of Greenwood Point. And we are, we were born and raised in Isicua. We both attended Sunset Elementary. I'm here just to share my thoughts. We have a nine-year-old daughter, like much of us have young kids here, and riding on the trail is imperative. I personally remember when the initial trail was built along West Lake Samamish Parkway all the way to Northrup Road. And I can't impress upon you enough how much that trail meant to us as infants, as families. It'd be wonderful if we could just finish the final leg that has been in place, you know, just pending from as far back as I can remember in the '70s. I have wonderful, fond childhood memories with my family riding to Isicua. And I also have a memory of where my mom was riding in front of us, and she nearly got hit by a car. That's 40-some years ago, right there in the stretcher lane that we're talking about. So I, as an old, longtime resident, and my daughter, McKinley Greenwood, I would like to have her share of the long-term memories of this community, to continue forward in this final leg, to use the community, to use the services, not just as old residents, but also the future. I can't impress how that leg that we built, the county built back then, along West Lake Samamish, it just opened the worlds to us as longtime residents. And it'd be wonderful just to complete that journey. So just thank you very much for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Thank you. My name is Dawn Farmer. I live at, I live in Greenwood Point. And I'm going to keep it brief. I think everyone shares pretty much the same sentiments that have been expressed tonight. But I will say, I have a friend who's lived here for a long time. I've only been here for four years. Love this city. But a friend of mine who grew up here and was in high school here had a friend who died on that road. And apparently, there was someone else in the '70s who died on that road. To me, it's a miracle that no one has, that we haven't had any fatalities or accidents recently. But I feel like it's just a matter of time with the increasing traffic and the increasing bicyclists and pedestrians that are on that road. So I think let's not wait for a death. I mean, we have beautiful projects. I love what's going on in the city, all the great projects that we're doing to improve things. But we're talking about lives here, and let's just, let's just hope nothing happens before this project gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? Yes, sir?
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. My name is John Kurt, 4629 191st Avenue Southwest. I'm also a business owner here in Isicua. And I noticed that this project is great, but there's one thing that bothered me about it. All the money says future years. Okay? I really would like to see that moved up significantly. My grandchildren actually live right there in Samamish Bluffs, four-year-old twins and a six-month-old grandsons. And I would love to be able to walk to the park with them, but I wouldn't do it right now. So need to move up the priority, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? Anyone else? Third call. Seeing and hearing, no one else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? The public hearing is closed at 8:15. And the council now has the opportunity for additional questions. Councilmember Share.
To start things off, Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution Number... 2013-05, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program as shown in the second sheet to Exhibit D of this agenda bill and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Share and seconded by Forkner. So now is the opportunity for discussion and questions. Councilmember Butler.
So I'm looking at the project sheet, and there's, there's a figure there of $6,180,000 earmarked, you know, for future years. What work has been done on that and what work was done to arrive at that very conceptual cost estimate? And the second part, as I recall, when the city annexed Greenwood Point-South Cove, shortly after that, we did a needs assessment for roads and trails in that newly annexed area. Could you comment on that work that was done and the level of, the level of effort that looked at the needs in that annexation area?
Yes, I can. So the estimate that we have here is based on what's in the comp plan, basically bike lanes each direction and only sidewalks on the roadway. It doesn't include multi-purpose paths. But it's also intended that we would do a design study to determine, because of the restrictions of right-of-way in some areas and walls, there'd be probably some, possibly some changes in that, those costs. But the study that we referred to, yes, we did have a pretty comprehensive study that was completed, looking at the safety of the roadway accidents that have occurred on the roadway, street lighting. We also looked internally in South Cove of the roads. And some recommendations were made on sight distance improvements, on street lighting and striping, and those have been made. This improvement was one of the, I think, one of the recommendations. I don't think, I think pretty much everything that was identified in the study that came out were, have been, mostly have been made, I think. But although some of them would be included in the improvements here.
Councilmember Butler, and then Councilmember Winterstein, and then Councilmember Barber.
I could follow-up, follow-up question. And so the trail that has been referenced here this evening, was that a part of the needs assessment?
No, I don't think there was a trail. I'm not remembering a trail.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. So may I direct my question to...
May I go back just real quick? I'm sorry. Just there was, when we were looking at the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trail, it was this, we were looking at what side of the freeway that should go on, and it was determined to put that on the south side where Newport Way is.
I actually have a, thank you. As chair of the Infrastructure Committee, and I noticed in the comments, it says in the update that the TIP does not need to be prioritized because that is done through the process of approving the CIP. And then your, the committee did some reprioritization the other way. Could you just speak to that? And also, just in general, the whole, what the actual order and prioritization of these projects means today in the TIP versus this other look we're going to actually take as, at them in the CIP?
I would be happy to address that. In some of the past years, we brought the TIP, which is the Transportation Improvement Program. The Transportation Improvement Program is a, it's a state program that allows cities to submit a list of projects that they would like to have state funding on. If the state has money, they look at those, that list of projects and say, we have funding for this, we'll award it to Isicua. If it's not on that list, the state won't fund it. We send the prioritization in, in a general way, so that the state can see what's most important to Isicua and what is either further out or needs additional funding than what the state would probably give us. Basically, the TIP just goes to the state for their funding review. Once the TIP is done, we also have a capital improvement program. And the capital improvement program, or the CIP, is the actual mechanism for funding projects in the city. So the prioritization on a TIP doesn't mean as much as the prioritization on a CIP. The CIP has not been presented to the council at this time, so we haven't had the ability to review it and decide where we want to prioritize our capital funds. Don't get concerned because we did not move this project up on the TIP. That doesn't mean it's not a priority. It doesn't mean it may not get more funding. It's just the process that we have to go through. The CIP is actually the funding document that moves any of these projects forward.
Thanks, Joe.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Probably a question for both, but Gary Costa. So most all of these projects, and I was sort of looking through here to try and decide, an average dollar for study and designs, which is always the first step. So would you have an estimate of what it would cost to begin this project through the study phase?
I was thinking about that. Just thinking about a 5% cost for doing a design study would be about $400,000. It's just a rough number I'd come up with. Because of the length of the roadway and we need to do geotechnical, geotechnical work for the walls that may need to be needed, I think that would be a first step.
So that's a fairly low dollar amount when we look at the bottom-line piece here. So then, are there dollars set forward in the CIP yet? Nothing at this time, Joe?
We haven't seen the CIP, so we don't know.
Not at all.
Exactly what, what there is, what the competition might be for other departments and everything else.
Okay. So there would still be time, then, to move forward, at least to begin the design phase and start to move this particular project a little bit further up in what, in the list of desired pieces of roadway construction for next year, even though it's rating quite low here?
Yeah. It's still going to depend. The $6 million may be a good figure. The $6 million may be high, it may be low. We wouldn't have any way of knowing how to prioritize it until we know what the actual cost is. The next step would obviously be getting a more definite design cost for it.
Design cost.
Seeing how the CIP and the process we're in, we'd have to talk to the administration to find out, you know, how we could, if there was a way we could move that process forward. Because normally, the CIP would be coming to us within the next month or so.
Okay. So is there value in, for, to move forward in the CIP to put some dollars on this particular project this evening?
I would say there's probably value. I'm sure the audience would agree wholeheartedly. There's a lot of value.
I think so. I mean, because as I'm looking at the pieces that are already prioritized here this evening and, and, you know, I'm looking at the North Isicua roadway network projects, that is, that $9 million. I mean, and easily $250,000 could come from there. And then $100,000 from Complete Streets and $100,000 from Overlay. And that's $450,000 to begin this process of the design portion. So, so some thought for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I certainly understand and appreciate the comments I've heard here this evening. And I can specifically recall, as an individual who was part of the South Lake Samamish, Greenwood Point, and Lakemont Triangle annexation, prior to joining the council, the things that we were told in our neighborhoods about improvements that we could expect. And this particular project was, as the handout we received this evening from the salsa update points out, was definitely on the list. Our cable rights were on the list as something that was supposed to have come down, too. The garbage contract was something we thought we were going to get resolved a lot faster, too. And these are all things where I feel the neighborhood has been hurt in a number of ways. And I would certainly love to see this project finally move forward at some point. Now, is adding money to next year to do design, you know, if we do it in the TIP, it might send a message to the state. When we get the CIP and we actually start prioritizing what we spend our budget dollars on in 2014, that will be the opportunity for the Infrastructure Committee to receive from the administration a priority list. And then, as we do every year, the committee will then decide on reprioritization, if any, amongst the projects. There is a fairly limited pool of money. As you can see from the complete list, we've got about 35 projects on there, many of which are out into future years because they deal with things like the central area plan, which is a much longer-term process. But then you look at other things that are, you could say, higher on the list, and it really is a bit of a competition. And it's a citywide competition in that respect. And so while I certainly understand, as someone who joined the city in the same annexation that you did, the need to get this project done, we on the council and in the administration have to look at things from a holistic, city-wide perspective. And every year, there's just only so much that can be done. So the good news is, it's on there, and it's eligible. The bad news is, it's not on there soon enough for what I think many people would like. And the one thought that I will leave you with is that there is another annexation effort that is currently being considered. And I would wager that if that moves forward, there will be a host of other projects that get added to this list, many of which could potentially be placed ahead of number 18 on the list right now. Just some food for thought. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Is the council ready to act upon this Resolution 2013-05, adopting a six-year transportation improvement program and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board? Ready to act upon that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passed unanimously. I have heard additional comments from the council concerning the capital improvement program and prioritizations therein. So those have been noted. Yes, Councilmember Butler.
And so typically, for the audience, typically, the mayor prepares the proposed budget for 2014 and provides that to the council at our first meeting in October. And with that, then the council deliberates on the budget and the mayor's recommendation and puts together the final budget that we vote on in December at either our first or second council meeting in December. So it's, it's great that so many people are here this evening and that so many people are interested in this. The council heard your concern. The mayor heard your concern. We're sort of at the beginning of the budget process for next year, and I would encourage every, well, I don't have to encourage you. I know you're going to be involved in this as we go through the process of putting together a budget for next year. So thank you for indulging me. Ava?
Thank you. It's a very good summary of the process. That's, that's great. There are no other items to, well, yes, there are. I take that, take that back. There is another item after regular business, and that is good of the order. And so, Councilmember Winterstein?
Yes. So this may be germane to some of our guests here this evening. Last Wednesday, I think I even heard somebody say it, that the, I want everybody to know that the, the county, the county-owned trail, it's not a city trail, it's not a state trail. It's actually owned and funded by the county on East Lake Samamish, the part that was paved in city, in Isicua city limits from the north and all the way down to Gilman Boulevard. So that's been opened. I think that was funded by the, a county parks levy from a few years ago. And I know there's, and the upper, the northern section up in Redmond City Limits has also been completed and paved. They current, the county currently has money to pave part of the remaining section in between, a large distance. And we may be seeing, as residents, another county... But I just wanted everybody to know that, that trail is open. I am a regular bicycle commuter. I do occasionally use all the roadways that have Samamish in their name that were referenced here tonight. And, and just about this particular trail, if anybody's listening and they ride southbound on East Lake Samamish, I personally have found the use of that trail, once you get to the city limits, it's my, it's my new preferred way. I don't need to be on East Lake Samamish any further. It's 12 feet wide. I'm sure I'll see more pedestrians and people with earplugs in and dogs on long leashes and families and stuff, but that's okay, you know, we'll take, we'll, we'll work with that. But I just want to bring to everybody's attention that that's open. I think it's a real gem that we have that inside our city limits. I'm glad it's associated with the, the state park. You get a better look at, you know, some of the wetlands there. And so, again, as a bicyclist, both northbound and southbound, as opposed to being on East Lake Samamish and the other streets, I really, I'm really glad that it's there and want to bring that to everybody's attention. That was it. That's my, for the good of the order.
Okay, thank you. Other items for Good of the Order? Okay. If there are no other items for Good of the Order, then the council meeting is adjourned and it is 8:32.